Ladies and gentlemen, do I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on open? I have a first, I have a motion, and I have a second. No discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in an open session. I need to, I need a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered.
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please, I'm sorry, there's a roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
And we do have one action from closed session?
Oh, I move that we readmit student A to Montgomery County Schools.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We do a roll call on that.
Typically, we do do a roll call for that.
Roll call on that too, yes.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
At this time, at each of our regular scheduled meetings, the school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, and when the three minutes have passed. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay, no one has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to address the board? Seeing no one, public dresses are closed. Consent items. If there's nothing to be pulled from consent agenda, then we will consider the consent items approved. Is there any discussion regarding consent?
Yeah, just curious why all the minutes from last year were included, and what exactly is the purpose of that?
Well, we thought that the electronic version of the actions taken by the board might suffice to meet the minutes requirement, but it does not. We're required to keep written minutes as well, and so Ms. Drake has been working on those this summer, a couple of weeks, so in the future, you won't see this many at one time, but we found out sometimes electronic is not good enough.
Okay, so we will, at every meeting, be approving last meeting's minutes at some point?
Well, right now, we're in the catch-up period.
Right.
And then, once we catch up, it might not be as quick as every meeting, but they won't be as backlogged as this, but the electronic format that Board Docs uses where everyone can go back in and see what happened, that does not suffice for our records retention requirements.
Okay.
So we have to go in, and the board has to officially approve the minutes. That authorizes the board chair to sign them, which then allows us to put them in permanent record storage the way we're supposed to.
So, is there something that we can change with our policy to help you with this process?
It's a state statute.
That's what I figured.
Have fun typing.
And the field trips, the grant proposals are all included in the consent items also?
Yes, there was a donation, field trips, and then some grant proposals.
Okay, and I, I, there's, I was wondering about that donation from, I think it was one of the auto.
Duncan.
Do you have some more information on that?
Not, I don't have any more than what's in the board agenda background sheet. Is there something I can find out for you that?
Which one was it?
It's C, Duncan Ford Mazda, wishes to donate 1775.
No, I can find, yeah, I'd like just a little more information if I could just have that, thank you.
We'll be glad to get that for you.
Is anyone else interested in that also, or just me?
It depends on what kind of information you're looking for.
I'll just send it out.
Yeah, it's fine.
To everybody.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy with any time someone wants to give us money.
Personnel report, do I have a motion to adopt the personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries?
May I just say one thing about the approvals this evening? By your action this evening, you have confirmed the appointment of Jason Garrettson to the position of principal at Christiansburg Middle School. I believe Jason's in the audience this evening. If you would stand and let us recognize you, Jason. You have also approved Carrie Stewart as the new assistant principal at Falling Branch Elementary School. I'm not sure Carrie's in the audience, but congratulations to Carrie. She'll be a very busy young lady.
And by the looks of things, we approved every teacher in the county.
Well, we approved a lot. We've had, you know.
Thirty-five pages of personnel report. Payment of the bills, I'm sorry, were you finished?
I'm finished, yes.
Payment of the bills, do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
I had one question about the bills.
Okay.
Just, I noticed that all of the, looked like electric bills were included this time. Was there a specific reason for that?
Well, this payment of the bills included your closeout from the end of the fiscal year, so you're seeing a lot more than you usually would in just a regular month.
Yeah, okay, just curious, I noticed that there were a lot more pages than normal, and just wanted to make sure there was not more of a, some more specific reason.
There's a motion, and there's a second, and no discussion, okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've paid the bills. Superintendent's recommendations and announcements, Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. This is, there's several grant proposals this evening that require your approval. The first one is the MCPS School Security Equipment Project, and this is the second year that we have made application for state funds to improve school security. We have also made use of special funds from the Board of Supervisors to support improvements. Our progress has been excellent. The grant prioritizes schools by age and need. This year, we are seeking to provide enhancements to what we have already been able to accomplish, and provide to schools targeted Blacksburg Middle School, Christiansburg Middle School, Christiansburg High School, and East Montgomery High School for any grant dollars that we might receive. The focus areas are uninterrupted power supply systems, additional exterior security cameras, and electronic access controls, swipe cards. The grant requires a 25% match, but we can satisfy this with things that we're already purchasing, and it's recommended this evening for your approval, although we have already submitted it because of the timeliness and the deadline for doing so.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Backup power supply, sounds like a good idea, especially since SOL testing got interrupted this year when the fire went out.
We agree with you.
So how many schools will now?
We targeted four for this grant.
Okay, and this is the first time that this grant has come before us?
No, this is the second time that we wrote a grant. We wrote one last.
For four schools?
Sixty, I think it was $60,000. Laura, do you remember?
Last year, we requested $100,000 and received, I think, $66,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, for, I believe it was five schools last year, different schools and different projects.
That was just my question, how many schools do we have? Now we have nine schools, this will be nine schools if we approve this?
Funded, if this is approved and we receive funds, that would be nine schools then that were, had equipment installed using this grant, but I think we've touched all our schools with a combination of different funding.
With the $400,000 from the supervisors, plus this $60,000 grant.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed.
Not a good night for me to lose my voice. On behalf of Five District Partnership, Montgomery County Public Schools has requested $132,000 to continue three more years of the Project Hope New River Valley Program, which facilitates the success of homeless children in the region's schools. Funds originate with Title X of the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, presented for your approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Who, who lead, who in our building directions program?
Aileen Brinkman, that's what I thought, Aileen Brinkman.
Thank you, that's all needed to know.
The third one?
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed.
The third one is the Virginia Department of Education has submitted a request for 9.7 million to the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. The grant would fund a five-year project to develop and pilot a comprehensive systems approach for addressing youth mental health needs. Montgomery County Public Schools was selected as one of three pilot school divisions, along with Fairfax County and Pulaski County.
Let me interrupt you. I believe you're on Grant D?
No.
C.
No.
Are you on C?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem. The project will increase awareness of youth mental health issues and improve access to mental health services for students throughout Virginia.
Second.
I'm sorry, my confusion. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
The amount is for the nine million amount of the request, is that just for us, or is that to be divided among Pulaski and Fairfax?
Laura talked about, but it does involve all three.
Yeah, that's the total amount that the state's requesting for the three areas, as well as staffing at the state level to put some systems in place. The amount that, hold on just a second, I can tell you, the amount that would come to us is approximately $2 million over five years.
Over five years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
So is, is the grant, are we submitting a separate grant from those other entities? Are we just kind of piggybacking on their grant and?
We, we are partnering with
Okay.
Virginia Department of Education to submit this grant.
So there's one grant, and we're just signing off with it with these other counties?
With the other two divisions, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
How are we selected to be a part of the pilot? Well, I think one thing that helped us out a lot is we're known well statewide for our partnership with New River Valley Community Services, and part of the reason I believe that is Pulaski County also works with New River Valley Community Services, so I think that reputation for working really closely together, the school districts and community service boards don't always work as closely together everywhere. We've got a great collaboration going on here, so I think that helped us out a lot.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, Deanna, sorry.
And the final one is the grant proposal, Youth Leadership Empowerment Action and Development, or Project LEAD, and this is a grant for an East Montgomery High School student interning with the Virginia Tech Institute for Policy and Government, led the proposal creation to develop an after-school youth engagement and leadership program at Eastern Montgomery High School for the 2014-15 and 2015-16 school years. It will involve approximately 40 youth from East Montgomery High School and Shawsville Middle School who will participate weekly in a series of workshops and discussions. The LEAD project will include reflection and team-building activities that celebrate the participants' achievements. $77,845 for the two-year period.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's great that a student wrote this, and what the effort.
So this is an after-school program, how does transportation work with that?
There's a travel cost in there. He did not include transportation in the budget for that project. It would be for students from Shawsville Middle School and Eastern Montgomery High School. The EMHS kids would already be there, so would only have to find transportation home. Shawsville Middle kids, if they wanted to participate, would be able to take a bus at the end of the day from Shawsville Middle School to Eastmont so they could participate, but then they would also need to find their own transportation home at the end of the club activities.
So, what kind of criteria is used to select the kids, or is it first come, first served, and who's able to get transportation?
Though, interest, I think primarily is, is, were his criteria for kids, you know, purely voluntary after school.
Any other discussion, questions? Do I have a motion for approval?
Yeah, I think we already have.
Pardon me?
We've already had it.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's our discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Our next item is the school readiness report, just in case nobody told you. Schools starting very quickly this year, and Dr. Graham and Jennifer Weaver are gonna update us on what we know right now about our readiness to start.
Good evening, board members, Ms. Blackburn. As you know, it's been the shortest summer ever, and so, ready or not, the students will come, but we will be ready. So we think we're, we're, we are well-prepared for school to begin. As you know, opening session is tomorrow, I hope that all of you can attend. We did have new teachers begin this week, and also did an administrative retreat this week, so we think we're ready to go. And each year, we like to tell you a little bit about what enrollment looks like. Last year, at the elementary level, K through five, we had 4,427 students at this time. The 4,367 number that you see is a week old. Last week, we had 44 more students enroll in Montgomery County, so that brings us up to 4,411 students, and it changes the PTR to 19.0. But keep in mind, we're starting school much earlier this year, so last year, by the time we started school, we knew where students had moved to because we'd received requests for records. So this could still drop, it could still increase at this point, we really don't know, but we're watching the enrollment very carefully. And this year, we'll have 232 teachers in the elementary world, and we have hired those teachers and are ready to go. And with that, unless there are questions, Ms. Weaver will tell you what the secondary enrollment looks like. Okay?
Secondary schools are also ready to go. You can see from the numbers that although we have less teachers this year, our PTR is very similar, it actually decreased a little bit due to the efficiencies and the new scheduling model. And the principals and the guidance counselors have been working very hard to make sure that the schedule's ready to go, that students are all, have the appropriate courses, and everyone's ready. They're all very excited, even though it's been a very short summer, so we're excited and ready to go.
I have a couple of questions about this, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Have numbers changed on secondary since last week?
They haven't, no. We've been pretty stable over the summer.
And how do you arrive at the 21.98 number? Because when I divide 4950 by 315, I got 15.7 and not 21.98.
You take the number of course requests that each student has, so at the middle school, that's six courses that all students take, at the high school, it's eight courses that all the students take, and then you divide by the number of teachers times the number of sections they can take, teach. So at the middle school, that's five, and at the high school, that's six.
Okay. It might be wise to put a note to that, because if I were the public and I saw that right there, I would say our, we don't do our math very well. So, it was just, it was a question, I noticed it immediately, I said, that does not look like the right number, so just make a note of that possibly.
Sure.
Thanks.
Be happy to.
Let me piggyback on that, because I, this looked like fuzzy math to me, too. We've, we've lost nine teachers from last year, and our enrollment's gone up, yet our pupil ratio's gone down.
Right.
And you explained it, and I think possibly, does this, does this, do these pages go out to the public?
Yeah, this PowerPoint is onboard. It's onboard.
It might, it might need a footnote or two of explanation.
Sure, I'll be happy to do that.
Any other questions or comments? So the, the, the new scheduling model has in fact saved us, for lack of a better diff, teachers, because we're down nine teachers, yet the scheduling model has indicated that our class sizes are also down.
Because we equalized across the division, all teachers teaching six classes. We still had some teachers that were teaching five last year.
And that's the impetus of, of the new model, is that we're, we're utilizing our teachers more and?
That is one of the positive benefits of the new scheduling model, is its more efficient use of our resources.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
So, moving on from that, the curriculum and instruction initiatives for this year, we're going to continue with the instructional model, and just to remind you, that included relationships, assessment, application, engagement, content knowledge, and instructional strategies. And we found that our focus on engagement last year was very powerful, so we want to continue with that.
We're going to continue our work at the high school with year two of incorporating engagement into the classroom, and certainly continuing to focus on math. We'll share with you in a couple of weeks how successful we were at many of our high schools, we saw some fantastic results, so we're going to continue to move ahead with that. We're going to be adding additionally a specific focus on English, particularly the writing component at the middle school, which ties in with the textbook adoption. We got some really great electronic resources that came with that program that we're excited to implement at the middle school level.
And we're excited about the new six-year plan. We just met with principals this week and rolled out a little PowerPoint that they can share with their staff to move them forward, and then the next step will be that each school writes the continuous improvement plan, which will be due to us in October, which will be based on the six-year plan. So we have a lot of ideas for this year and are looking forward to great things.
And although we get a little bit of grace, we do certainly still have a very important and exciting construction project, so things are progressing nicely at Auburn Middle, as you hear in your Capitol updates, but we've been working very hard and are very excited to look forward to moving into the new building.
A question about the engagement project, or whatever you want to call that. So you're going to give us some information or some data as to how that actually worked? So, what would that look like? Would that look like student to student, or just overall throughout the building, broken down by our subgroups? How would that look?
We collected actually a lot of data this year. I've been sharing with you ongoing the data sweeps that are based on what we see every time we go in a classroom, and that steadily progressed, but I'll certainly show you that again. We have the results from the 20-minute observations that principals completed with the supervisors. We have some survey data from students, which won't be as dramatic, because students' perception of school obviously takes more than one year to drastically change, but we, we did collect student data as well. And then we also obviously have the student achievement data to show how that corresponded to their test scores, so we've got lots of, lots of different points of data.
So that, will that be broken down by subgroups?
Uh, the student achievement data is.
Yes, the student achievement is, but the actual observations that are done on the data sweeps in classrooms are not, because you go into, for example, if you go to East Montgomery High School, how many classrooms would you visit?
We visit all the classrooms twice at Eastern Montgomery, so over the course of the entire division, when we did the data sweep, we usually had about 800 observations that we collected in a data sweep, so it's every instructional activity we saw during that timeframe, we got about 800 pieces of data each time, and we did it four times.
So, when you said "we," was it the curriculum supervisors?
Uh, supervisors, all the administrators, myself, we had a fairly large team that we rotated through each school. The administrators always visited another school, they weren't in their own school, so we all switched places each time, try and keep objective as possible.
So when you were doing those observations, you did it as a classroom as a whole, not as individual students?
Correct.
Progress?
Yeah, correct.
But our student achievement data is, again, broken out by all the subgroups.
Okay. Okay, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, how can we identify how successful the engagement was for all of our students, you know, other than just a test score?
Well, the way the data sweep works, the rubric, the way we coded things were based on all students instead of some students. So, for example, if you came in and a teacher was lecturing, and there were some students in the class who were not engaged in that, then that got a particular rating. So, the rubric is based on what all the students in the class are doing, that was one of the big changes, instead of focusing on what the teacher was doing, we were focusing on what the students were doing. So it, it certainly isn't perfect, but it gave, gave us great data about what was happening for students, and, and you really could see a drastic difference from the first data sweep to the fourth in terms of the activities that students were participating in, it was very, very different.
I don't want to take away from your presentation next time, but so, when you saw students that weren't engaged, then you worked with the teacher to strengthen those skills?
Yeah, that was the focus of all our joint-based meeting and school-based meeting, were to try and teach them strategies they could use to engage all students, and actually, we're going to talk tonight about a couple of technology ones that we used that were very helpful. That was very successful with our math program. Some of the programs that we mentioned earlier, especially the Math 180, every student was working at their level, and so we were able to track their progress individually, and that's something that we hadn't always done such a good job of in the past, so every individual student saw how much progress they were making, and we saw a big change in motivation when we did that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What is Marzano Professional Development High Schools?
That, all we've been talking about, it's all sort of lumped into one thing. We had monthly meetings with the high school teachers, and Marzano was one of the reference materials that we used with them.
So I can find that online?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
If you want a hard copy, you just need to see me, I loaned Gunnan one the other day.
I will pass it along, I'm, I'm in the process of reading, but I'll be happy to, I borrowed from Ms. Blackburn.
Were you finished?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got some spare copies, if you'd like one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Next item is our school crisis plans, and this is an annual event. In accordance with the Code of Virginia 22.1 to 79.8, each school must annually complete a school crisis plan. The crisis plans are maintained at the school sites and at the school board office. The school board is required to certify that the crisis plans have been completed and reviewed. The plans are available for review at the school board office, and you will be asked to approve them at your meeting on August 19th. So if anyone would like to review multiple plans or any plan, if you will contact, I believe, Lois Graham's office and speak with Becky, she will be able to set up a time for you to do that.
Where are they, again?
In Lois Graham's office. If you'll just call there, speak to Becky, she'll arrange for you to see them. Any other questions or comments about that one? Our next item is the Certified Employee Evaluation Handbook. In August of 2013, the Montgomery County Public Schools Certified Employee Evaluation Handbook was revised to meet the requirements of the Virginia Department of Education. During the school year 1314, the MCPS Certified Employee Handbook Committee met on four occasions, February 6th, May 29th, June the 5th, and June the 12th, to consider some February 6th, May 29th, June the 5th, and June the 12th, to consider some potential revisions to the handbook based on our year's experience with using it, and to align the document with current practices. The recommended changes are listed in the background sheet. There are six of them, I believe. The changes presented for information this evening and will come back for action on August the 19th. And, uh, either Mr. McElandro or I are happy to entertain any questions you may have about it.
What was the thought process from changing the exemplary scoring ranges as you did?
I'd be happy to answer that. Actually, when we first adopted this handbook, we adopted standard seven at lower than 40%. In fact, I think it was 30%. And the Department of Education ultimately told us that we had to make it 40%. And when we changed the percentage on the 30 and 40, we did not adjust the matrix for exemplary, uh, so forth ratings, and in fact, the state recommends 36 to 40. So, ours was probably a bit high this year, and, uh, so we are recommending, and it was a recommendation from the committee, that we adjust it to the state recommended level. And each, each one of the segments will be adjusted to reflect this.
Okay.
So, this past year, they, the teachers were evaluated with this previous scoring range for the first time?
That is true.
And standard seven, I don't know if you realize, is having to do with the test scores.
Right.
So, it really kind of brings us, um, more in line with our experiences based on the year, and it adjusts a little bit closer to the recommended, uh, range of performance that comes to us from the Department of Education.
Thank you.
Again, an information item tonight.
Any other questions or comments?
As the Shawsville Middle School Annex Building was evaluated for demolition, the school administration also evaluated the need for continued use of some of the associated properties on the Shawsville campus. These included a football field, softball field, tennis courts, and a concession stand that are located basically across the street from the middle school and to the right as you're facing the old annex, which is pretty much demolished at this point. The school principal has recommended that, or has indicated that there is very little to no use by Shawsville Middle School of these facilities. I did personally go out and visit those, the areas, and I would find that they're substandard for current, uh, recreational play. The tennis courts are totally in disrepair. The school uses that area for two things at this point. They occasionally go out and walk on the track, and they use it as an emergency drill, um, area for students to exit. I recently authorized, uh, facilities to spend a little over $4,000 of Montgomery County Public Schools Maintenance money to go out and do a safety check of the light posts, because they have been there for some time and have not been used, and nothing, uh, glaring was found there at that point. It appears at this point that since the use of that property is largely for recreational use, it would be much easier for Montgomery County Public Schools to maintain if it were leveled, as was the old annex building. So, in the interest of trying to make it available to the community, we've talked about it a couple of times in this room, and I'm recommending that we surplus that property to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration as a recreational property for use by the community, with the caveat that our students could use it for emergency drills and/or to walk on the playing field if it's there for, uh, physical education. According to my con- um, conversation with the principal, it is seldom used by the school for any purpose.
Typically, just when you're, when you're, we're making those kinds of decisions and and wanting to do that stuff with the county, what, what is their tip- have you talked with Craig at all?
I have talked with Craig, and, you know, Craig and I, uh, spoke about what would be the best course of action, and obviously, I have some concern about using scarce school maintenance money.
Right.
And capital money to maintain a facility that we don't use.
Right.
And, uh, so he recommended that appropriate tack would be to allow the supervisors an opportunity to assess whether it would be, uh, appropriate recreational property or not.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, so we would still be, um, the demolition and everything on the, would be our responsibility, or everything just goes to them and you all do what you want to do?
Well, we were prepared to demolish it, and we had it in our bid, but they did not want us to demolish it.
Right.
So, we're turn- we're recommending that this board turn it over to them and let them maintain it as a recreational space, and we would not invest any further funds in it.
We've already done the demolition of the annex.
We already did that.
And that's, that will be proffered in with this as well? Would that, we would be giving them that part back over?
No, no. This is just that athletic area.
Just the recreational, athletic areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to, uh, transfer this deed?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, are all those in favor of the transfer? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't think I made that motion, but...
I'm sorry, yours was the voice I heard. I heard Ms. Woolsey's second.
I think it was Penny.
It was Ms. Franklin, I apologize. I'll correct that.
Okay, our next item is local tuition rate for 2014, 2015. The proposed rate is $4,245.84. It's a 3.58% or $146.75% more than this year. The rate will only apply to non-residents of Montgomery County who are not employees of Montgomery County Public Schools. By previous school board action, the rate for children of employees of Montgomery County Public Schools who are non-residents is $371. There are currently no out-of-county, non-employee children attending Montgomery County Public Schools as the board requested. And so, at this time, the only fees that we collect are the $371 and, from our employee, for our employee children. This is presented tonight for your action.
So, why do we set this rate if we don't allow that right now, just to...
I think we're required by law to set it.
I think so, yeah.
Let's, um, do I have a motion to, um, accept the local tuition rates for 2014, '15?
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, no further discussion.
Uh, how many do we, how many teachers do we have that participate in that 371 program?
Four or five, you said?
Twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the tuition rate for 2014, '15? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
The next item is request for funds, one-time capital request. Actually, the next three items are related to the budget, and they're ordered as shown on your agenda, because they're somewhat contingent one upon the other. So, I'm going to start with the, um, J, which is the request for one-time funds. This is a request for additional funds for capital expenses that were recommended, that I'm recommending that you make to the Board of Supervisors. For the two previous years, both in 1213 and 1314, Montgomery County provided Montgomery County Public Schools with $575,000 to be used for capital improvements for our school system. The Board of Supervisors further recognized the need for capital funds for the school district by a one-time allocation of $400,000 in 213, in addition to the special allocation that they made the last two years of $250,000 for roof replacements, $150,000 for technology, and $175,000 for bus replacements. These items were a part of the original school board need-based budget request for 2015, but due to the gap between the identified needs and the available funded, funding, they ultimately were not funded in the budget approved by the board. They remain critical items for funding from other sources. I would like to request that the supervisors consider making this allegation, this allocation, again, in 2014, '15. The uses would be as follows, or the recommended uses would be as follows. Continue our roofing project list $250,000. Provide technology hardware $150,000, and purchase two buses $175,000. As you know, Montgomery County Public Schools does have carryover funds this year. If the supervisors approve this request, it would allow this board the flexibility in the development of your carry-forward plan to actually set aside additional dollars for capital expenditures. Should we be funded both by the supervisors and if this board were to add 575 of your carry-forward money for capital, we would have the potential to, uh, invest about $1.2 million in our facilities for next year. I feel like that we need to ask for the money. There are capital reserve accounts within the county, um, budget. It would create a situation in which we could do these priority items and do more, and we're always looking for ways to do capital, because we don't really have a capital budget. If they say no, then I would come back to you and suggest that you use your carry-forward to fund those three priority items, because they are what I would consider the first priority. I prepared a draft of a letter. I have discussed with Mr. Meadows, my intent to recommend to the board that we ask the supervisors to consider this request. And, um, with your approval, I would do the letter and get it out to Mr. Meadows tomorrow.
Let's put, I'm sorry. You finished?
Mm-hmm.
Let's put a motion on the table first. Um, do I hear, do I hear a motion to, um, authorize the superintendent to send a letter to the county administrator requesting $575,000 for one-time fundings for use in capital expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
Do they have a meeting before our next school meeting, I assume, where they could approve this?
They met this past Monday, I believe, last week, so yes, they would have one next Monday.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, you know, obviously, we want to answer from them before we make decisions on the other, and I noticed that the other two items were just for information tonight, so I definitely would like to get their response back for that before we decide any of the other parts. It never hurts to ask.
That was my, my thought.
I mean, all they can say is no.
Or yes.
Or yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is the, uh, 2013, '14 Year End Report and Carryover Funds. So, carryover funds resulted from unexpended budget, budgeted dollars in the 2013, 2014 budget totaling $869,860.38, and additional revenue of $909,476.56, resulting in a grand total of $1.779,336.94 in carry-forward money, so just about $1.8 million. To facilitate your discussion this evening, there are two attachments to your agenda. The first is a financial summary that shows you from where the carryover funds originated. It shows you your federal dollars, your state dollars. The second is a draft proposal for the use of the funds. The information reflects preliminary input regarding some needs of the district and potential recommendations to the board for use of the funds. The recommendations reflect discussion with my leadership team, review of board input on your goals for 2015, analysis of available data to identify needs of the school division, and a review of reductions that were made to our needs-based budget for 2015. The primary areas that were identified by the board for goals for 2014 were technology, budget, teacher quality, academics and engagement, career and technical programs, and although it wasn't consistently mentioned, we all know that we've kept a focus on capital and facility improvements over the last five years, and so I included that as well. I'm going to go through the sections in the attachment. Section one, and it's also on your screen, section one is the carryover federal funds to federal projects, and the total in this section is $324,958.28. These funds include $1,000 in Medicaid, $118,500 in special education, $118,500 in Title I, and then $87,500 from Carl Perkins Vocational Funds. This is about $325,000 in carryover of a total of $17 million that is spent in this category in the school division during the school year or budgeted during the school year. Section two. These recommendations support a variety of division needs and options, including partial support for an additional instructional technology resource teacher, and the e-learning backpack programs. Capital maintenance projects cover a pre-K funding gap. We lost about $35,000 in pre-K money, and this will allow us not to have to reduce a class. It also includes consideration of funding the college application week. It was in your original proposal. It's modeled after the program that was conducted at East Montgomery High School this past year and funded by the state.
Can I ask you, is that 50,000 per school?
No, it's 50,000 total.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
It restores to the field trip budget the amount that was cut. It also adds back in a web content management software program, and we've done a little more research with that program since it was originally presented to the board, and have determined that it would also allow us to support an online student-parent registration process. And what that does is let, for example, a new parent to the community go right to our website, fill out all the paperwork, either print it and take it with them to the school, or it feeds right into our Power School database. So, it's a, a really a great asset to new folks, to the community. The subtotal for this section is $903,815. There are two areas in this section that I'm going to come back to and provide some additional information, um, about the document. So, I'm going to start...
Can I just ask a question?
Uh-huh.
When you talked about the, um, 324,000?
Mm-hmm.
You gave the breakdown of where that came from?
Yes.
But I don't see it on the slide that you were referring to.
It's not. I didn't detail it on the slide. I just deta- I just detailed it in my conversation and in an email that I sent earlier this week. But that is where it came from. It's federal dollars. All of that is the federal revenue. If you look at the other attachment that's on the, to this agenda item, it shows the federal revenue line, and that's where this came from.
But that doesn't break down, so evidently there's an email out there that breaks it down. So I think you said Medicaid?
Yes, it's $1,000 in Medicaid. It's $118,500 in special education, elementary and secondary expenditures, and it's $118,500 in Title I federal carryover. And then Carl Perkins vocational funds that would carry back over for the upcoming year in $87,500. It's a little bit higher than we sometimes have in federal carryover. Last year, I think it was about $160,000, $170,000, a little bit higher this year than last year. But that is not a significant amount when you look at the fact that it's a $17 million So I've done section one and section two, and I'm going to come back to section two, but I wanted to go through the three sections, or the four sections, before I go back and provide a little more detail about some of the recommendations. Section three includes a recommendation to fund two reserved teacher units since we reduced 11 positions in the budget balancing process this year. It also suggests the addition of a social worker. We reduced one from our staff about four years ago, and the idea with this social worker is to specifically have them work in the East Montgomery area, which is one of the areas that we have the highest poverty in the entire school division, and it would allow us a little more flexibility with our other social worker to be more focused time with the remainder of the county. Eastern Montgomery, as I indicated, has the highest poverty rate of any area of the county. It also calls for providing funds for training at identified schools for the implementation of positive behavioral intervention supports, and the definition of that program is at the bottom of your recommendation list. It's basically a support that works with trying to set up a behavior system in which you intervene at the lowest level and try to solve problems before they become really big problems in behavior or in academics, and generally the two are very connected.
Okay.
The final.
Can I ask a question now? You prefer that I wait?
Yes. Pardon?
You want me to ask a question now, or you want me to wait?
Well, it would be, it would be best if we can go through the four sections and then come back, and we'll spend as much time as you want to on it. The next recommendation in that category is to provide mobile computer carts at our three middle schools. Christiansburg Middle School, we're recommending two. Blacksburg Middle School, we're recommending two. Shawsville Middle School, we're recommending one. And Auburn Middle School will be able to provide the necessary mobile lab through their current FFNE for technology as a new school. These are designed specifically to support improved student achievement through the writing program, and I gave you the writing scores for the four middle schools in the information that I provided you attached to your agenda item. The subtotal for this section is $310,968. Section four is basically a section in which I suggested some options for the remaining $239,595.66, and it could be anything from funding an e-backpack learning program at Blacksburg High School to additional buses, to additional capital expenditures, or with some of the revenue projections that we have been looking at coming out of the state. It could even be a request to the supervisors that we carry it forward as undesignated in case there were to be a revenue shortfall, just ideas. The, the plan is very fluid right this minute because as Mr. Lyons was speaking, you know, one major piece of it, that capital piece, would change depending on the decision made by the supervisors about whether they would give us some one-time money. So the draft plan for carryover is presented for your information this evening. I'd like to go back to section two, which is where the e-learning backpack program and the capital segment is, and talk just a little bit more about those two pieces, and then open the whole proposal up to general discussion and questions from the board. So let me talk a minute about the capital maintenance projects. Capital maintenance projects, this recommendation is tied, as I mentioned, to agenda item J, which we already talked about. Should the supervisors provide Montgomery County Public Schools the funds for our roofing projects, technology improvements, and the two buses, then I would suggest that the board spend an additional $575,000 for other capital improvements. For your information, I've shown the next three roofing projects on the roofing projects list on your slide. They are Shawsville Middle School chorus room area, the Gilbert-Lincoln Center building, the Falling Branch Elementary gym, and the Christiansburg High School construction stand, and these are the next ones in our project base for roofs, and I've given you approximate estimated costs for those roofs. If the supervisors say no, then I believe that we would need to, to fund the roofs, the buses, and the technology as a priority. But I'm ever an optimist, and so I felt that it was important to go ahead and identify what projects we might could do if we got that money from the supervisors to do the things I've already spoken about. So first, we have been doing some work in preparation for your upcoming special meeting on capital, and we tried to take some documents that you're already familiar with, one of them being the CardnoTech study, and another one being the capital maintenance project list that we've been working off for several years now. And we tried to do some reconsiderations for prioritization because priorities do change, and we needed some guidance as we looked at what the priority should be, and these are some of the ones that we came up with. Health and safety, the physical condition of a building, the risk of failure of an identified deficiency, because CardnoTech identified a lot of system deficiencies, and so you evaluate what is the risk of failure if you've got a 30-year-old water heater, and where does it belong in the priority list. The input from facilities, because they're constantly assessing our buildings, and also other inspections, in fact, our principals and their school teams are also involved in doing quarterly inspections at their schools and making recommendations for facilities' needs there. So out of that, we came up with what appeared to be the first-tier priority capital maintenance projects, and these represent projects from two places. The capital maintenance project list, which is noted as CMPL at the end of the recommendation, and then the CardnoTech study, which is noted as CT. And again, we have provided you with estimated cost for these projects. They include some repaving of Trax tennis courts and paved playing areas at Christiansburg High School, East Montgomery High School, and Shawsville Middle School. It includes replacing some stage rigging and lighting. We've talked about that quite a few times over the last couple of years at Christiansburg High School, Shawsville Middle School, Gilbert-Lincoln, Margaret Beeks, and Christiansburg Elementary. We have some issues with the soffit that is in place at the schools with Christiansburg Elementary School, Margaret Beeks Elementary School, Gilbert-Lincoln Elementary School, and we've prioritized those for replacing those soffits. Replace the water heater is Falling Branch Elementary School, and it's a CardnoTech project. CHS Bellevue, Christiansburg Primary, Beeks, Gilbert-Lincoln, Falling Branch, replace priority deteriorated concrete sidewalks, ramps, and light poles, and that again came from the CardnoTech study and from the capital maintenance project list. And finally, CHS and Shawsville Middle School, some brick masonry improvements for serviceability, and that came out of the CardnoTech study. These are just excerpted pages from the big project that we're working on to try to give you a plan for moving forward on capital maintenance and trying to begin to find a way to address the CardnoTech study, which gives us some very valuable information but didn't provide any funding, so we're looking for that. So this is a starting point, and we'll have a much more comprehensive document for you to look at when we have our special meeting on capital, and hopefully at that point we'll have some much more definitive information from our Christiansburg Strand study that we've been doing. So these are the ones that I would recommend that the board consider for funding if we are able, as I'm optimistic we will, get that $575,000 from the supervisors.
Does the stage rigging stuff, does that include a sound system replacement stuff too?
No.
Okay. If I could bring up a suggestion, though, on the concession stand for CHS, which, you know, we've spoke about that for years, or I've brought that up, because, you know, Christiansburg basically has the same turnout at football games, if not more, than any school in the county, and if anybody's ever been at the bathrooms at that concession stand, it's about this wide. And to me, if we're going to put a new roof on a concession stand that really is not adequate, why would we do that without maybe expanding that a little bit? We know it's going to be a long time before Christiansburg High School gets something new, and I brought this up when Blacksburg got their new school, because most of the other schools' concessions that weren't new buildings were donated. Christiansburg concession stand was donated. And although I'm tickled and I'm happy that they're getting that, I wish there was some way we could incorporate making that a little larger to have better bathrooms because they're horrendous.
I would suggest two things, that maybe that would be a subject that would come be better handled in the capital meeting, because I've got a list that goes on and on after this one, so if we chose not to do that, I've got plenty of other projects there.
Well.
The other thing I would say is that the feasibility study for Christiansburg also will have some impact on how you look at projects across time, so it's difficult to make a decision about doing a concession stand without looking at the big picture from the feasibility study. So it's not mandatory that it gets a new roof. The board could decide to do something else in your discussion.
Well, and I'm not saying that I would choose to do something else in place of, I'm just saying, is there any way that we could bring that up under discussion since it's right here in front of us, looking at it, and that's an option, to, you know, extend the bathrooms a little bit to give more room there? That's, that's all I'm saying. If we're going to put a new roof, make it a little bigger.
We've got, we've got the Capitol plane meeting coming up.
You know, I'm not saying take it off and do something else because that's not what we want to do. I'm just saying, because I wouldn't want to do that and hurt that project. I'm just saying, if we were going to go to that extent, is there any way we could put a question mark, hey, can we look at the size and make those bathrooms just a little larger? Because they're bad.
This is a draft document, and that is certainly a discussion that the board could have when we find out if the supervisors are going to fund the first $575,000, which would be the first step in this discussion.
So when will the feasibility study be presented?
At that meeting is the plan.
Okay.
That's the direction I'm working in, depending on when the meeting is set, and hopefully I'll be able to give you something in advance to that so that you would have an opportunity to peruse it on your own prior to that. The next one that I wanted to talk a little bit about and then just open it up to general discussion from the board and questions you might have is the e-learning backpack. And Julie and Jennifer are going to help me with this a little bit, but I'm going to start. Maybe. There it is. I'm going to back up just a second. I'm going to just make a few comments to start with. I wasn't here when you all had the first discussion about the e-learning backpack, and I want to just review a little bit about it before we actually look at the presentation and tell you some things that we've done. The Virginia Department of Education announced a mobile computer tablet initiative for ninth grader students entering high school in the fall of 2014. The initiative is partially funded by the state in schools that have been identified as accredited warned for school year 2013-2014. Schools must implement in 2014-2015 in order to be eligible for the up to four years of the program. In Montgomery County, it would potentially impact over 2,000 high school students over a period of four years. School divisions may include other schools, they can include other grade levels, in a one-to-one initiative, but the additional schools and grade levels would have to be funded at 100% local cost. Montgomery County Public Schools is eligible to receive $208,000 in state funding in just year one of the implementation. Over the four-year period, it's $850-plus thousand. This was in our original needs-based budget as an opportunity. However, as you know, during budget deliberations and when funding didn't meet our needs, we had to reduce this as well as some other expenditures from our budget. I'm bringing it back for your consideration as an option for a worthwhile investment in carryover funds. One of our close neighbors, Roanoke County, has long been involved in a one-to-one initiative, as has Henry County. A recent check with the Virginia Department of Education showed that 20 school divisions have already submitted a plan for the, using the e-backpack money available from the state, and these include Buchanan, Charles City, Colonial Beach, Cumberland, Dinwiddie, Fairfax, Gloucester, Hampton, Hopewell, Colonial Beach, Cumberland, I think I mentioned that one, Isle of Wight, King and Queen, Loudon, Loonburg, Manassas City, Martinsville, Norfolk, Northampton, Pennsylvania, Prince William, and Virginia Beach. And I share that with you because it's really a very diverse set of school divisions that have said they want to participate, from very rural and some of them high poverty to districts like Loudon. My recommendation is for the board to fund at least the schools that are eligible for the state grant money by using carryover funds for the additional cost of the project. And there are just a few things that went through my mind as I considered bringing this back to you, and I know you had a lot of discussion when I wasn't here. I consider technology as a powerful tool to support and enhance classrooms. It can never take the place of quality instruction and quality human interaction, but it surely can make it a little more engaging. Technology access supports our mission to prepare students for college and the workplace. Technology is in every business, it's in every office, it's in every industry, it's in virtually every classroom, and it's in many, many homes. It is the expectation that students walk into their freshman college classes with a computer, laptop, or tablet in their hand. I thought it was interesting on a recent tour- I thought it was interesting on a recent tour of the new signature engineering building at Virginia Tech, where they're going to have freshmen in classes there as well, that every classroom was set up so that a student would have three, would have the ability to power up three devices, not one, but three, at their place, at their seat. Pretty amazing to me. Digital classroom support, you know, the teacher role, part of what we've been doing with engagement with our students, is trying to move the teacher role from the old stand and deliver to the role of being a facilitator and a coach and a guide, somebody who can connect with students in the classroom. Digital classrooms support problem-solving and independent and creative thinking. I can't imagine doing a research project this day without using Google or some other search engine. It supports collaboration beyond the classroom. You know, our kids do these Wiki pages and all these things, you know, where they, you know, all sign on and complete a collaborative project. So the grant, you know, I thought about it long and hard, and I said, you know, this may be a once-in-a-lifetime chance to provide a unique opportunity to at least 500 Montgomery County Public Schools students in just year one. And hopefully, year one would just be a start, but what if we can't continue with year two, three, or four? And I really did some mind searching about whether it would be valuable if you couldn't guarantee doing year two. And I think it would, because we would have touched the lives of 500 students and families and many teachers in at least three schools. We would have gained some very valuable data about the return on investment and had an opportunity to implement a real-world learning project from a one-to-one initiative. We would gain powerful information to assist us in making future decisions about the use of our resources. Is this where we want to put future resources? We did a small pilot, we felt very rewarded by it, but it was so small that it would be very hard to equate it to what the impact of doing a full-scale implementation would be. So we looked at the documents, and we worked to try to come up with maybe a more efficient and more financially reasonable way to approach this, and have some things for you to look at this evening. I'm going to talk just a second about the budget, and then I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer and Julie. Let's see if I can see the budget. One thing I didn't bring today is in glasses. So I have to find my big, my big print version here. Do you have a card copy of this that I can hold up here? I got, maybe I got it right here. Let's see. I apologize. If I can get these just the right distance from my eyes, I'll be able to read it. Okay, the budget's up there, and basically, it shows you that in year one, student devices... You know, Julie, I'm not going to be able to read this, so I'm going to have to have you do it, okay? Very good. So, year one, student devices for the three schools, AHS, CHS, and East Montgomery High School, would be $325,650. Content and MDM software, and the totals come to $339,294 to do the three schools. We've also put in a line that shows you what it would cost to add BHS. Of the $339,294, $208,000 of that would be absorbed by the state grant. There are some other costs that are associated. Number one is restoring an ITRT position, because we would have to have that to manage the addition of 500 tablet devices. We have some teacher devices and covers that we are going to use, but we're going to use some existing technology budget to cover that. And then the required state division match of $40,800, bringing other costs to $148,406. So the total cost to do the three schools, $487,700, less the state contribution of $208,000, means a one-year cost of $279,700 to do AHS, CHS, East Montgomery High School, and the, these are the targeted schools by the state, and provide the support needed for 500 students, every teacher, and every family that touches their life during the school year 14-15. So what would it require from Montgomery County Public Schools? $279,700 from the Carry Forward Fund. I apologize for stumbling and not having my glasses, but thank you, Gergen, for helping me out. So I think at that, we're going to ask Julie and Jennifer if they would talk just a little bit about the implementation plan, and we've done a lot of thinking about what it would look like and what it would take to actually roll this out for our students.
Well, before they start, let me ask this question. You've got $179,690 for BHS. Have you included the other costs, such as restoring ITRT, the teachers, so on and so forth? Is that included in there also?
The total that you see at the bottom that says $487,700?
Yes.
That includes everything except BHS. To add BHS, you would need to add $197,690 to the grand total.
But not those other three items?
No, they're already in there. Everything is in that total, except for the discretionary decision to either add the fourth high school or not.
Thank you.
Julie, thank you very much.
Good evening. Given that Ms. Blackburn would like, like for you to consider the Virginia e-learning backpack initiative in her carryover funds proposal, we would like to provide you with an update. First, we would like to share the tablet pilot video with you again. I believe that many of the points the students made in their interviews are very relevant to this topic for your consideration.
Students that have exactly the same tablet allow me more mobility to drop a document to them or to get a standard sense of what everybody has at home, technology-wise.
Well, the teachers can email you, if you, like, miss a couple of days in your around Wi-Fi, they can email you your makeup work, and then you can stay caught up in school without having to turn in all the papers whenever you return, because you can just email them to her every minute.
I feel more engaged in class when I have my tablet in front of me, because I feel like it makes things a lot easier and a lot less stressful if I have everything I need right in front of me, which I do with my tablet. Always take this home, so if I'm unsure when something's due, always have it on my calendar, so I pretty much have no questions.
And it also helps a lot, because in other classes like history, I can, when he has an assignment for us to do, I can get on there and look up the map, instead of having to pull out my book and look in my book, I can just get on Google and find a map. And then he lets me use that instead, and it's easier. It helps a lot.
I really enjoy using the tablet in science class, because it just, it makes the assignments easier. Instead of having to, like, write out notes and try and keep up and wasting a whole bunch of class time, they're already uploaded, and then you can just follow along.
Well, we get on iXL during class and do the different, like, modules on there, and it makes things easier, because then you don't got to go and get the laptops in the laptop cart and roll it in there.
I take pictures of all of my notes and keep them in individual folders for subjects, and then I have them for every class, and it's easier to take my notes home and study.
A flipped classroom is a unique opportunity where a teacher essentially creates videos where students take notes at home. In my class in particular, we do a lot of foldables, and this would allow my students to create foldables at home that go over examples as almost like a preview to the next day's class period. The next day in class, then, we can talk about the notes and then go straight into application problems, and they allow us to get further into the material and dig a little bit deeper.
Ms. Gergen will put on her drive instructions for each station, and she will pretty much give us a whole lesson just on the tablet, on a video, and then we'll know how to completely do the lesson.
I've actually heard about the flipped classroom last year or even the year before, but we weren't able to use it in our classroom, because I didn't have a standard-based technology system for all of our students, so when they went home, they didn't have anything at home, some of them. And so it's very essential that students have access to technology in order to flip their classroom. Creates a more engaging experience once they get back the next day.
Project that I just did in Ms. Rust's class was a project about erosion, and we had to make a video, and we each got, like, a certain part of erosion, whether it was an avalanche or a landslide, and I got the Lahar. And it was different using the tablet, because instead of having to write it down and then doing it in front of the class, we could do it on a video, and then we could upload it. I've been saving projects and assignments to the Google Drive by, of course, logging on to Google, clicking on to Google Drive, and then uploading it to Ms. Rust's folder that she gave us each.
My students are extremely excited about this type, this tablet pilot, and in fact, they're so excited, they're bringing it every single day. I'm keeping track of how many students are forgetting their iPad on a daily basis, and it's not very many. When you think about how many kids can't remember to bring a pencil to class, and those same kids are bringing their iPads every single day. They're totally excited about it, and they love it.
I'm actually a lot less lost when I have my tablet in front of me.
I'd rather use the tablet during class time, because if you have to go to computer lab, it just takes away more class time, and it's just harder that way. Whereas the tablet, you already have it, and you can do your work, and you can save it easier, and it's kind of like your own personal computer.
It's a lot easier for studying for tests. I can take pictures of anything, and I have all of it right here.
So if funded, what would the implementation plan look like? There would be several phases of implementation. During the first phase, we would set the stage for a successful one-to-one initiative. We've worked really hard to find a tablet that's affordable, practical, and has all the features that makes it instructionally useful and productive for high school students. I'm happy to show you the Lenovo tablet that Harvey handed to you to pass around. It has several things on it that you could play around with. It's a good example of a tablet, maybe even that tablet, that we would want to use in the initiative, and it meets most all of the requirements that we were looking for. I really like that tablet.
Would each one of those tablets have the keyboard with it if we were to go that direction?
It is part of the package on that one.
It is?
It is. It is part of the purchase price on that one. If the e-learning backpack initiative is funded, Windows 8 tablets would be configured with software that is standard to all MCPs computers, so students and teachers would already be familiar with the setup of the devices. All electronic and web-based resources that MCPs has already invested in will be accessible and performed properly on a Windows 8 tablet.
Is that the list?
It is. That's the list that Harvey passed around. I tried to be very complete with the list, but there may be a few applications or web-based resources that are not on that list for high school students, but that gives you a good idea of the resources that MCPs has already invested in, electronic resources that kids may or not, may or may not have full access to because of the availability of computers. And then the tablets would be configured during Phase 1 and deployed for teachers so that professional development could begin prior to student tablet deployment. During Phase 2, we would work with the Director of Secondary Education and the building principals to develop consistent communication for parents regarding our one-to-one initiative. Student-parent meetings would be held on each campus to promote parent involvement and provide guidelines related to internet safety, cyber ethics, and responsible use of technology. ITRTs will work with classroom teachers to develop lessons and provide opportunities for students to learn to use electronic and web-based resources that maybe they don't, are not already familiar with. Then during Phase 3 of the implementation plan, students would get their tablets. It would take a considerable amount of time to configure more than 500 tablets. ITRTs will work with each principal to plan for deployment of the tablets. We would hope to have a full-scale implementation of all student devices prior to the start of second semester. ITRTs and curriculum supervisors, supervisors will continue to work to support teachers through the collaborative planning process and grade-level professional development sessions to meet instructional needs as they come along. So obviously, it's going to take a great deal of support for teachers and students and parents to feel comfortable with what we're doing. And so the great news is that this fits in seamlessly with the high school professional development that we already have planned will be one great way. Another way, we already have ITRTs in the building that are used to working with teachers. They'll specifically focus on delivery of the devices and helping teachers become comfortable. But as we mentioned, teachers are already going to be very comfortable with these devices, because they look exactly like the desktop computers or the laptop computers that they're And then I wanted to show you, on the back of this sheet that Harvey handed out to you, you can see the dates that we already have meetings planned with the high school teachers. And so it'll be wonderful for us to be able to talk about how to use these strategies. And one of the ways to make these strategies easier and more effective for teachers to use is technology. For example, if you see, one of the things that we're starting with is trying to make sure that we're doing everything we can to cause learning. There are things that we know from research that help students learn, and so we want to make that easy for teachers. And one of the things, one of the ways we can do that is to help them organize their learning, and as you heard from lots of the students, the device really helped them with that. They had access to all of their notes, to videos, all those things in one place, instead of having to try and spend the majority of their class time taking notes. Now they can spend the majority of their time interacting and practicing with that content, instead of having to spend a lot of time copying and those types of things. So we have lots of meetings planned, and these are all things that we can work on with the teachers, teaching them the strategy, and then showing them how technology could be used to make those strategies easier or more engaging for the students. We also already have a ton of resources that are in place, as you can see on the other side of your list. But one of the challenges, you heard a couple of the students mention, is that now if they want to use those resources, even in the school building, teachers are having to either check out laptop carts or go to the computer lab. That takes a lot of time to go to sign up. We only have a certain amount of them. And so a lot of the resources that we're finding to be very effective with students, as I mentioned earlier, Math 180 is a perfect example, we don't have easy access to use that on a constant, everyday basis in the classroom. Teachers can't adjust their instruction the next day, they've got to wait until the next time they can get into the lab. And for students to really feel confident with that progress, they need to have regular interaction with it. And so one way we'll use this device is just to make everyone's life easier and to make it a more regular, ongoing interaction with the things that we already have in place. And the other thing that we'll do is make sure that we get lots of good input from teachers, which is one of the steps we already do with our professional development training, but to find out what it is that they need support on, what things are interested in. That list came also from teachers, things that they were already using in their classroom. So we want to make sure that we're targeting training both with ITRTs and through our professional development sessions, to make sure the teachers are getting the training that they need. In addition to these sessions, we do have the availability of some Title II funds that we could direct towards professional development if we needed additional support. Those funds are there. So we do have lots of ways to support teachers through this process to make sure that we can make, because we all know, if teachers aren't comfortable with it, it doesn't matter how comfortable the students are, they're going to restrict access. So we want to make this as easy and efficient for them as possible.
So I want to thank Julie and Jennifer for doing that little overview for us, and I'm just going to make one last statement. And I'm just going to make one last statement and then we'll open it up for questions about this and anything else that has been talked about this evening. But you know, I believe that we have an opportunity, that the time is right, that we have the right people and we have the right approach to make this a positive and powerful experience for schools, staff, students and parents. I urge your consideration of the opportunity. And with that, Julie and Jennifer are available as Dan with Facilities piece, as well as myself and John and anything else that's in the recommendations that you would like to discuss.
Let's... Board members, any questions? Do we need to start at one end or the other? Because I think there's probably a lot of questions. Joey?
Can we start with just the eBack practices? We just talked about that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but was the initial intent, the reason that those three schools were selected, were essentially related to what particular... Was it math scores if I remember correctly?
It was accreditation. They were all three accredited, warned last year.
Right. The first thing I'll say is an agreement that with, I know Mr. Jones has said before, I don't think we can do this program without completely doing it for every student across the county. I don't see it even for Blacksburg High, because I'll say that. My question is this. You mentioned, Ms. Blackburn, that Roanoke County, I think you said, has a one-to-one initiative that they have implemented. Do we have any data from them supporting that their one-to-one initiative has actually helped with accreditation?
Well, they do have less accreditation issues than we have. They also have greater student, per student funding than we do. But I think probably, without having actual numbers in my hand, probably one of the greatest testaments to the fact that they feel that it's important and making a difference is that when the budget went south, they had to stop for a couple of years. And as soon as they gained a little bit of funding leverage, they immediately reinstituted their one-to-one initiative. I'd be happy to ask them for some additional data that they would share, but I think that that's a powerful one in and of itself.
I would definitely want to like to see some data if there's any available.
Don't we have some data from Auburn in reference to the success of this program?
Yes.
Other than the student testimonies, the only quantified, you know, qualitative data that we have is the survey that the students took on their affect for learning. And overall, for every question that we asked the kids, there was a gain for students having a better attitude toward learning and feeling prepared for school.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
So I guess you feel like you don't need any additional monies to do the training and implementation process?
I think between the sessions we already have set up and then Title II funds that we have available if we need them, I think we have adequate resources for professional development.
So if we, if we do this and we decide to do Blacksburg or not to do Blacksburg, we have to do it this year. If we leave Blacksburg out, we can't bring them in next year, right?
You could always bring Blacksburg in because it's 100% at your cost. So one approach would be in year one, you try the three schools that the state will fund. And if you have a positive experience and you want to continue funding it, then in year two, you would do ninth and 10th graders at the other three schools and add the ninth grade at Blacksburg High School. The other option is to come up with an additional $197,000 and do all four in year one. But you cannot ever get the state money if you don't do those three schools for 14, 15. So this is your last shot for that. And the state ultimately picks up about half of the cost for the three schools that they are funding.
For year one?
Uh, for each year.
Each year. Okay, so...
So $208,000 plus each year for those three schools.
One of the concerns when we talked about this earlier was how do we fund this after the four years and the state funds are not there?
Well, you know, I believe in taking a long look at things. But right at the moment, I think that even a one-year experience with this would be very valuable. And just as we've seen with Roanoke County, if it turns out to be something that we feel like has been a great return on investment, I believe that we will find a way to do it because we find a way to do the things that we hold as the highest priorities. So although I can't tell you what the money would look like in year five, I can tell you that you would have had an opportunity to really evaluate whether it is where you want your resources or it's not where you want your resources. And not only would you hear from students, but you would have an opportunity to get to, get data and hear from families and from teachers and school administrators as well.
In year two, three and four, we're still talking about needing to find the 279...
Every year.
700. And the counties that you listed earlier, did you say that those were counties taking advantage of the state matching?
They are ones who have submitted a plan already to access the state matching money. And I can give you the breakdown on future year's cost and I'll give them to you with the three schools and then I'll give you a number for Blacksburg to add as the second number. In year two, it would be $178,000 for the three and $243 for Blacksburg. You have to add them together to get the total. In year three, it's $185,000 for the three and $246,000 for Blacksburg. In year four, it's $191,000 for the three and $250 for the additional school. Plus, once we get past year one, or at least year two, we'd have to have some additional personnel to support the number of tablets that would be coming into play. So ultimately, you would add an additional ITRT either at year two or year three. Now, two large schools, of course, are Blacksburg and Christiansburg. And when we add the Blacksburg project, you're adding, you know, a significant additional number of students that that impacts you.
What all is included with each device? They're obviously getting the tablet, they're getting the keyboard, as you said. They're getting a way to charge it. Are we giving them covers? Does that include insurance? What all does that include?
It does include the insurance, so it's an accidental damage protection plan that covers all accidental damage and warranty damage or warranty replacements, of course. And we did include a plan for cases. So it's basically what you have in front of you. That tablet, our team has worked really hard to find a tablet that has a keyboard, that we don't have to go out and get another keyboard or hope to find one that'll fit, that doesn't require additional power for the keyboard. So the kids only have to keep up with one power supply that takes care of the entire device, the tablet and the keyboard. Has a USB port, that one fortunately has two USB ports. So we did a lot of looking and watching and we've seen other school divisions. We went and visited Henry County and we recognized that at the high school level, kids are going to need to be productive. And just handing them a tablet with access to resources is fantastic. But by providing them a Windows 8 tablet, they can log into our network. We can provide options for printing. They can get to their network drives. They can be productive on the device so that they can do their research papers and not just access information.
I'm looking at carryover funds proposal. And you've got Blacksburg included in there. And the total is $1,779,364. Is that the total of carryover amount?
That's the total carryover. But the only place that I put BHS as a participant in the e-learning backpack is under the, you see the 239,595,66. That's money that I said the board could have discussion about and we may, you know, move things around or there may be things that I put in the top that you don't want to fund and that number grows. But if you chose to fund BHS and/or any of the other schools, this would be one place that you could look for the $196,000 or so the first year.
Any other questions or comments?
So we are 100% sure that our Wi-Fi capabilities and our ITRT number of people we have is enough to sustain those 500 tablets that are going to be around. My experience in the past with the technology, no offense to anybody in our school system, which I'm not in it past couple of years, so I'm sure it improved and, you know, with the virtual classes. Always we had crashes, problems. So it was not practical for kids at one point even take those virtual classes or in the classrooms, going to internet, working, not working, slow, not slow. When there's SOL taking, you can't do anything. You know, that's, you know, what I'm seeing. So adding this many tablets, you know, I want you to tell me that we're in a better situation right now. Or I want to hear that.
Of course, every year we work to update and to resolve any issues that may come along throughout the school year. And you know as well as I do with technology that you learn as you go. And so I would hope that all of the issues that you experienced two years ago have been resolved in the buildings now. We do have lots of nice new facilities. Auburn High School is definitely saturated with wireless internet connectivity. Eastern Montgomery High School had a lot of work done to it this summer. So if there are network adjustments to be made, then of course, we would do our best to address those adjustments.
Just, we don't want to be in a situation that will go ahead with, everybody will have the excitement and all the tablets and then frustration comes after because of the system failing or technology failing. Not that the teachers don't know what they're doing. The students will, you know, definitely know what they're doing, but they can't do, you know, that frustration. I kind of don't want to have.
I do have some numbers that were provided to a reporter earlier in the spring of the number of devices that were connected to our mobile internet at one given time. And I'd be glad to dig those up for you and provide them for you. And I mean, just, there are lots.
I mean, it's so exciting to see that it's working. I'm just, you know, I just want to make sure, you know, before we get into deeper, we know that thing's going to sustain.
Well, and to piggyback on that, a lot of the programs that they would be using to learn in class wouldn't really need Wi-Fi usage.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good thing.
So it's more of a program-based learning, right, on it? I mean, even though I know I was one of the ones that was kind of eh at the beginning, you know, I think it's a great idea. I think we can use it. And, you know, as long as we were able to do, you know, some teacher salary raises and things like that and have money, I think it's a great thing. It's just that had to kind of come first, so...
I guess I just, after us hearing the news from our governor about the future of what's going to come from the state, that's not going to, didn't sound like it was going to get very much better at all the next couple of years. Just the long-term commitment that we would have with this and wondering how our community and our staff would feel with the amount of time that you would be investing in planning this and implementing this and possibly not doing it or possibly doing it. And then all the stuff that we're going to cut to make it, whether it's $200,000 or $500,000 in our budget. I mean, I think it's, I'm all for technology and the video just really makes it seem like this is the way to go. But this long-term commitment concerns me.
Well, there's two ways of looking at that and I'm looking at it the other way. The community is going to just be beside themselves because we've saved $850,000 over the next three years to put an EPAC program in because the government gave, the state gave us that. And I think if that's the approach we take, I think that the community would be behind that 100%. That's my angle.
If we save that amount of money next year and have to eliminate some teacher positions to make that happen, is the community going to be happy?
I mean, even, even we approach this and ask how the community feels, do even they know what we are, you know, thinking about doing in the community? Because when we look at the North Carolina example, I think Mooreville, Mooresville example, you know, one of the things they warn not to do or do, you know, get your community involved, get the businesses involved. That's how they supported their system, not just, you know, state one-time money. So, you know, are we looking into that? Are we asking our community if any businesses will support in the future, if not this year?
And I think one of the things that will help with that is the exact question Mr. Lyons asked. People want to know, what does it look like when happens? And this is a great opportunity to propel 500 kids instead of, you know, two months with two classrooms. We learned a lot from that, but it was difficult to really speak with confidence about what it would look like with everyone. And so, you know, Mooresville, they were looking for an entire division worth of tablets. You know, we'll have a lot better information to tell them about how important it was with 500 students. So in essence, this sort of is our chance to do a bigger pilot with state funding instead of having to pony up our own funds to try something out.
I think that's very true. And you know, I'm an optimist, but I'm also generally a conservative. But, especially when it comes to money. But, you know, in an instance like this, you know, I just ask myself the question over and over again, when would I ever have somebody else who would pay for half of this?
That's right.
And I just don't see it. And so I just, you know, say to myself, and I really believe that if we were not able to continue it past year one, that we still would have had a learning experience that would be very, very valuable to this school system for the future and how you spend resources in the future. And potentially have the impact as Gunnan was speaking about of getting some of our folks who are not all that happy to step up for public education sometimes, you know, a little more interested in what we're doing. So I think that there's potential there. And I do believe that you have the right people, that we have the right tools, that we're in the right place in terms of the advances that we've made in technology to be able to make it a successful project. You know, it's a risk-take. You always take a risk.
I spoke to Mr. Pauley today and Mr. Barnum. They said that there's 50 students in Auburn High School who will never forget the experience that they had with this program. That's number one. Number two, the North Carolina project took years to develop. All of a sudden, we've got something that's falling in our lap. And my question to you would be, if we could get support from the foundation, Montgomery County Education Foundation, it seems to me that if they went out to the businesses and the companies and drilled up some possible funds that would support this program, that could happen in a year or two instead of the three to five years it took for the North Carolina program to develop. I think it's wonderful. I was, my car was giving me difficulties the other day and I took it into a gas station, not a gas station, an automotive repair place. And I pulled in there and the young man, 25 years old, took my car, put it into the stall and then took out his iPad and hooked up a couple of do-hickeys, whatever they're called. And then he started punching in some letters and numbers. And I said, "Where'd you learn to do that?" He says, "You know," he says, "I learned it here." And I said, "Well, where'd you go to school?" He said, "Well, I dropped out of school because I slept all day in school." And I'm thinking to myself, I'm looking at these people at Auburn and I see nothing but engagement and activity and all kinds of stuff going on. And somebody mentioned, "Well, this is something that you really will carry over to college." You can carry it over into the auto shop. Because he stood and he says, "Well, here's your problem." And he punched in some stuff, showed me what the problem was and said, "By the way, you may want to take a look at this and this also." And I thought to myself, where are we? As a school system, where are we when this kid's got to quit school and go into the automotive field to learn how to do this? It's just, it's mind-boggling. Doesn't make sense to me. Doesn't make sense to me. This is a wonderful opportunity for us.
Okay, so I have a question. So if funding is not available to continue the program for four years, what happens to the devices? What happens if we have to stop?
I have a suggestion for that. I, in my opinion, as a technology coordinator, we would work with the individual schools to identify needs for those devices. And it could look several different ways. One principal might choose to have that device follow those kids. Another principal might find the need that they need some classroom sets of devices. So maybe instead of every kid having a device in one grade level, maybe all of the teachers have some classroom sets of devices that where there's some identified needs. The devices definitely would add inventory to our computer inventory, to our school division. And I feel sure that the devices would be used in the future to, whether they continue with a one-to-one initiative or meet needs in other ways.
So year three, can't fund it, but year four, we can do it. So we pull all those devices back in and give them back to those children who would now be in the 12th grade in the fourth year.
The funding is always for the incoming ninth grade class or reimbursement numbers are based on the freshmen, the ninth graders. So any year we, any year that we're spending additional money, it's with that ninth grade class.
Right. But I'm saying, if the children already have it and it's followed them through to the 10th grade, we can't do it in the 11th grade. The devices, you know, get reallocated. When the children get to 12th grade, now we can do it. Do we have to buy new devices or we just pull those back in and redistribute?
We could pull them back in, but, you know, I think we would have to make a very planned decision about things, okay?
At some point, you lose access to the funds. It's a bond fund. So if you, at the point that you opt out and you've passed it, you cannot recover those funds.
It's not their funds that we wouldn't be able to come up with because they've made a four-year commitment. It's our funds. So if we could not come up with our share, as Harvey said, you know, probably they would not let us opt in and out. You got one chance to opt in. And I think even if we only did one year, that we still have done something valuable for this school system. And so although my intent is fully that we would do it the whole four years and I'd love it if we could do for all four schools, I think we have to look at it as year one and then as year two.
So there's no penalty if we opt out at any point other than?
To my understanding, we just don't get the money and we probably would not be able to pick it back, pick the state money back up. But if we don't take it now, we don't get it.
With adding VHS the first year, do you feel like there's enough resources in the IT department to do that additional devices?
Harvey and I talked about it. We could do year one, but we would probably not be able to do year two or three without an additional person.
BHS is not in the mix for several reasons, I'm assuming. Number one, it seems to me that they're progressing at a level that I guess the state considers appropriate with their computer, their devices. So the state has indicated that we have three high schools that need to improve. The fourth one, the answer is?
Well, the answer is kind of not a yes or no, okay? You know, the state has a measuring stick, the feds have a measuring stick. Interestingly enough, when we looked at the improvement that was experienced this past year in overall improvement in percentage pass rates in math, the range was nine points to 25 points. The nine-point improvement was at VHS. It's a little bit harder to improve if your scores are a little bit higher, though. So that's a piece of it. The highest improvement, I think, was, was it Eastmont or?
Montgomery.
Eastmont, which is the poorest and the most needy of the communities that we have. So it's, it's, on the measuring stick, VHS did not fall short on the measuring stick that the state was using. It does not mean that that school does not have needs. It only means that on this measuring stick, they made the grade. Interesting also, on federal accountability for this year, VHS did not meet one of the subgroup math scores, but they made the all-students group and other groups. So it's all about a measuring stick.
Well, and not saying that I think they should or shouldn't, not even making this comment related to that. But in the years past, we've had different pilot programs with different type things that each school gets certain things that other schools don't to begin with. Like I said, I'm not saying they should or they shouldn't, just bringing out that point. I know with the iPod touches, certain elementary school classes got those and certain didn't because of different pilot programs. Am I correct by thinking that? So even though this is huge, if we chose not to do that, is it any different than a lot of the other pilot programs we've done in the past?
That's right.
And certain schools haven't participated. Just a thought.
Well, again, if you have some other questions, you know, Julie and Jennifer are the folks who can answer them for you, but I know you have interest probably in some of the other recommendations as well.
Okay, I have a question about the positive behavior intervention and support. I had some concerns when we were going through our, getting our input for the six-year plan. And I still have some concerns that this could be a cookie cutter program where all kids are expected to be in a cookie cutter school. And if you don't fit, then you're going to be pushed aside or punished when there's really nothing to punish except for, I'm different and this is not a norm for me. And if I don't just fit into that norm, I'm automatically going to be considered a problem.
I don't think that it is a cookie cutter program, but I'm going to ask Dr. Graham if she would come and speak to it. It's designed on the idea of tiered interventions for students and that for every student, regardless, race, creed, culture, poverty level or anything, that you need to look at that student and find a way to intervene with any kind of behavior issues that there might be at the lowest level so that it doesn't become something that prevents them from being academically successful. So you, most kids are at the bottom and you, you know, small interventions work. Next tier, they need a little more, different kinds of interventions or different ways of engagement. And then a very few kids, you know, need a whole different kind of support system. And this is supposed to have levels of support for the needs of every child, so.
Ms. Blackburn's exactly right. The program was originally created around special education students and it was working so well that then regular education came on board with it and it expanded to include all children. And the three levels, the first level is a primary prevention, which is school-wide and gives you some school-wide rules like walk in the hallway, that type of thing. And the language that teachers would need to say of, instead of saying, don't run, teaching teachers to say, we want you to walk, you're making it a positive rather than negative. So that's the first level is looking at the school-wide level. Then there's a secondary prevention for those kids that are a little bit more involved. And then finally, there's a tertiary prevention, which that goes into explain, there's an example of a special education child who has very strong needs and how you would intervene with that child and teach all people in the school, you know, what you might say with a child whose behaviors are very different. So it's structured to prevent what you're talking about so that you don't have a child getting in trouble for something that's related to their culture or related to their intellect or related to just not having learned. So that's exactly how it's structured to not do what you're thinking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other, I don't know if it's a concern, but just input, when we get to the options or even looking at the reserve funds, surplus funds altogether, there seems to always be an area that kind of gets left out. And that's our support staff. You know, I think we added a couple of custodians because we had new buildings, we needed, you know, more folks. But like on my job, one of the last things that gets taken care of is equipment. And there are days on my job when I'm running through two, three fork trucks to try to get eight hours' worth of work in, and it makes the job difficult. So I know we have equipment out there that is being stretched, is being used for years and years and years, just like our buses. And we need to, I would hope that we will look at what's going on there and give support in that area, too. You know, these are some of our lesser-paid employees and we need to support them some kind of way, too. Because it adds to the learning environment if these schools and these folks, you know, I've heard comments from a couple of them this summer with it being a short summer and, you know, just wanting to make sure that those buildings are ready to go when those children walk into them and not, we're still in progress, you know, we're done, you know? We've got them shining, playing, and you guys come on in and we'll take care of them, you know, every day after that. But if you don't get that bases in, kind of, you're playing catch-up for the rest of the year. So I hope we can get some information about what we can do there.
I think we have a list of some of our more important equipment needs. We were able to do a little bit of that this year, some equipment purchases just out of our regular capital maintenance and dance button and replace some things, but there's always a need for that. You're exactly right.
Can you explain for the writing, is that a software program that you're talking about using?
I'm going to ask Jennifer to come up and talk about that a little bit. It is geared, it is a software program and it's geared, it's made by Pearson, who's the same one who does the writing test. And I'll let her talk just a little bit more about how it might impact our.
Yeah, the teachers are really excited about it. We were able to support a group of middle school teachers that worked even during the short summer, that came in to go through the program and learn it so they can teach the other teachers. That's actually happening tomorrow. But it has two components. One part is for students to practice the multiple choice part of the writing, which is where we really struggled. And that's a lot of grammar and vocab, those types of things. And that's something that's really hard for a teacher to do because your students are in so many different places. So the computer program is completely individual-based. Each student will take a pre-test based on how they did. They'll have individual lessons. So the teachers will set it up as a station each day that kids will get to spend some time on it, particularly their level. And then the other piece of it is an online writing practice that, as Ms. Blackburn said, looks not identical, but as close as you can get to the actual writing that students do for the SOL test. And so right now, we don't have anything to simulate that. We're still, I mean, students are using computers, but it looks different. Word processing is different, so this looks almost exactly like that. So we think it'll be really helpful.
Did the writing test change in eighth grade this year from previous years?
Correct, two years ago. Yeah, so the test statewide seems to have been even more difficult this past year than it was the first year. It was very difficult the first year, but it seems to have, for whatever reason, this version was even more difficult.
And we didn't, the teachers didn't know it was going to change, like the math, how we knew the changes were happening?
Absolutely, they did. And they weren't really hard to prepare for it. But like I said, it's tough because there's such a range of skills. Grammar's one of those things that some people have lots of experience with, lots of practice with, and it's an area that unfortunately seems to really affect our students that come maybe from poverty or special education students. It really impacts them because grammar isn't necessarily a part of their everyday experience at home, so they don't have as strong a background set. So this really is going to help build up those skills at their level instead of trying to start a year ahead of where you're at. We can catch them up a lot quicker.
Thank you.
Any other parts that I can answer some questions about? It is information tonight, of course, you know, the big $575,000 recommendation for capitals contingent upon an action by the supervisors. But I will, you know, bring you back some recommendations for action at the next meeting and as well as try to provide you some additional information per the conversations that we've had this evening. Can find my place. All right. So item number L is the revised budget for fiscal year 2014-2015. The General Assembly finally adopted a budget on June 12, 2014. The total net change for Montgomery County Public Schools was a decrease of $66,000 in state revenue and a credit of $121,247 for VRS life insurance and retiree health care. The net change is that you ended up with $55,140 more than we put in the budget that you approved and that we sent to the supervisors.
Whoa.
So in this budget, we have added the $55,140 to instruction as the place for it to be so that we could balance the total. You can, of course, move it, but since that's where about 87% of our expenses, including the personnel side of instruction take place, it's a pretty good place to put it. And it is the $55,000 that I'm recommending that you use to partially fund the ITRT that's related to the eBackPak program. In the recommendation, I put 55 from the operating budget and the other $8,000 from the carryover money. But for today, all you have to do is agree or disagree that the $55,000 should stay in instruction. And Katie, this is information tonight also, right? Yeah. One of the things we did to try to help this discussion a little bit, based on some of the conversations that, you know, took place during budget season last year, is that we not only included a attachment that shows the additions and deletions, but we also included a second attachment that shows you the big category that the money is coming from. So for example, if you open up the one that says expenditure summary by major category, if you look at, say, line six, which is electric, and you see that the budget for 1314 was, and then you look and see that we increased it by 1.84%, and you see the budget for 1415 is $1,800, $1,800,393. That reflects the change that you made by adding the electrical money for the new school, which is one of your additions. It was $125,000 or something like that. Is that a true rendition, Katie?
Yes, I'd just like to clarify that the percentages are the percentage of the total budget, not percentage change from one year to the next year.
All right. Thank you.
I will just say, this is exactly what I wanted to see from day one. And for this to be included anytime we're talking about budget is exactly what I want because I do want to see those numbers just consistently because I'm not, I'm not going to remember them all the time, but for them to be there consistently is very helpful to me.
So it is information again tonight, so we can discuss it further. And the next time, we might know a little bit more about what we're going to do with some of the other carryover funds. Then item number M, school. Then item number M, school board superintendent goals for 2014-2015. Each of you had an opportunity to, uh, provide us with what you thought were important things for the board and the superintendent and the school system to be focusing on for, um, the upcoming year. And I've provided you with two things. Number one, a summary list of all the things that were suggested by board members, which is the attachment. And then number two, I tried to filter it into some common points, and these are the ones that I came up with, and I just thought maybe there might be a desire to discuss these a little bit or plan an opportunity to discuss them so that we could funnel them down a little bit and perhaps come out of here with some things that might be the goals for the superintendent's evaluation. But they would need to be filtered and narrowed somewhat, but, and to see if I captured what you think are the most important things, if you could agree to it.
Is this something that we wanna do here without Mr. Jones or something we wanna do at our retreat?
It's information discussion tonight, and I would like to see us maybe have some additional discussion prior to the retreat, because the retreat's not till October, but definitely it's not something you need to make a decision about this evening, other than to let me know if I'm on the right track.
Let's start with Ms. Willsley.
I think that, I mean, I, I like the goals, the themes that are listed here. It's very well representative, it's, um, probably be better to be shorter because that's a, that's a big list, but.
Yeah.
Well, and you just, I agree, it seems like a lot of the things are representative, so we can shorten that.
I think you've captured it. Um, I, I looked this over, and I thought it was, um, I, I thought it was interesting. You said board member number one, number two, number three, and number four. I don't know why, because we know who they are, but that's okay.
The public does it, Mr. Ivers. It's a public document.
Yeah, it's a public document, that's why we.
Well, regardless, maybe the public will prob, will probably know too. But regardless, um, I thought you captured them pretty good. Uh, Ms., uh, Goanin, sorry.
It is, I think the teams very well represented, uh, common teams, and I think from common teams, we have to probably get to the goals and make them definitely more concise and, um, shorter.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay.
Mr. Lyons?
Nothing else to add, I, I do think that they're good. I do agree, let's come up with a little bit more concise statement for each one of those, but overall, I think they capture what we were, what we're going for.
You have something to work with.
I do. Next one is school board professional development, and in this one, we're looking for some direction from the board about securing a facilitator for your board training, and this is the training PD that was, uh, directed by the advanced ed group. And I only had three people who weighed in initially, and of those, two said VSBA and one said a third independent provider. So I need to get moving if I'm gonna find you a trainer, so I need a little more input.
Yeah, that'll be three for VSBA.
Four for VSBA.
They have really, you know, understood in the last couple of years, when the state comes in and says, uh, "We wanna take over your schools," that there needs to be a, a deeper, um, level of training and understanding what it means to be as board members, and they've worked very hard and have worked with several of the school districts who have been targeted, or who were targeted since OEI was defeated and our constitution was upheld.
I agree, I guess if you have to have a second choice, um, on your list that was provided, um, I guess probably he's a Dr. McCracken, um, from Radford, I believe, I thought that was a good second choice.
I think that's the one I suggested when I emailed you, so I, I'm happy with whatever the board decides.
So I'm hearing, I think, that the first person group to contact is, um, VSBA, and then if we're unable to find something that would work with our schedules, then the second choice would be to go with Dr. McCracken. Okay, I'm good with that. And then you have your calendar, and I'm not gonna try to explain your calendar, so if you have questions, I'm gonna let Brenda Drake explain it.
There's the links that we were, I couldn't find a couple of days ago. I see the links now that I asked about, yeah?
They've, yeah, they've been there, and those are the links to download the mobile app. We haven't done the full public release yet because it's still branded with our old motto. There's an update that's gonna be coming out next week, they're rolling it today, but it has to go through an approval process with Google and with Apple, and that will not only rebrand it with our new motto and, um, some new vibrant things, it will do a little bit better job with the calendar management piece, and it should also be quicker, and they said our buttons may look a little bit different. So once that happens, then we're gonna be happy to direct the general public to it, but right now, because it has the old motto, we're holding off for just, just another week or two.
At that point, will we see each individual school actually have a calendar? When I click on one school at least?
Yes, they have them right now. You'll see the district and Christiansburg High School, those were our test schools when we were in the process of testing it. They figured out what the issue is, why we can't see the other school, it's a button they have to toggle on their end, but all of our schools are in there, they're using their new Google calendars, and so far, people seem really pleased with the ease that they're able to add events. It integrates very seamlessly with our websites, so they can put, um, calendars on their website that just update automatically as the days move on. They don't have to do any manual duplication of that information. So we're seeing a lot of great things already with that conversion.
So we'll see the school calendars within that.
Once that update rolls, I'll be happy to send you guys an email, they're supposed to let me know once it's approved, and then your iPad will do the auto-update, just like it always does. If you have the app open, you'll have to restart it, you'll have to swipe it off the screen and then reopen it, but otherwise, it should be seamless.
Looks great, I do wanna say, just the website and the new mo, motto, the way things look, looks great, appreciate it, it's really good.
Thank you.
Anne, back to you.
Thank you. Unfinished, unfinished business, uh, board retreat. Um, the board has tentatively set aside, set October 3rd and 4th as the dates for the school board retreat. Please double-check and make sure that you can confirm that those dates are, are clear for the retreat.
I haven't heard a schedule for those days.
Yes.
The initial conversation was the evening on the Friday and then a, a partial day on Saturday. I don't believe we have designated a full day. Uh, we don't have definite times yet, but if there's a discussion here tonight, we'll, we'll take care of that.
Where do we typically hold those?
Oh, we've held them in the, in the, um, board office, or we've held them out at, um.
Crosspoint.
Crosspoint, several places.
Okay.
Joint meeting with the school board and the board of supervisors is Tuesday, September Which topics would you like to see addressed during that joint meeting? I think we've done that, haven't we? We haven't. Okay, so we need to get on that.
Okay, so I thought that we were gonna do facilities and capital.
Capital.
That's what I thought we, I thought we'd just.
It's a different meeting, right? Yeah, that is for us to meet.
We were gonna have a special meeting for just the board on capital. But we were, we usually do talk about capital when we meet with the supervisors, but you know, I'm wondering if there's some other things that you have on your mind that you would like for us to talk about in that joint session.
Okay, so the feasibility study.
You would get that first. I would not take that to the supervisor meeting without having fully vetted it with the, with this board.
Okay, so we haven't planned our meeting for the capital planning?
No, it doesn't have a date.
Doesn't have a date, so we wanna try to do that prior to that, I would think, and so, 'cause I would assume a lot of our topics for that night are gonna come out of that meeting.
Well, if not, they would like to actually meet quarterly. That's been their request of us. So if we are unable to coordinate it prior to September 30th, we would have another opportunity, hopefully before the end of the semester.
Have they provided any topics that they wanna discuss with us?
No, I'm gonna meet with Mr. Meadows on Friday.
Okay.
Uh, they are hosting it this time, so they are generally the ones who, who do set the agenda, but they usually ask me for input when they're in charge, and I ask them when they're in charge.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be great if you could add, see what, if there's any leanings for them, that would maybe look, give us a little bit of direction.
Okay, I, I know we've had much discussion on separating our capital from our budget, making that a county, um, rolling into theirs, so I'd like to see where they're at with that. And I do believe that they had committed to start setting aside half of 1% or something like that to go into a fund, uh, so that we're being more strategic and don't run into, where do we find $124 million? So, see where we are with that. And where we're at with, um, sharing operations?
Gotcha, shared services.
Right.
Speaking of capital planning, um, we need to come up with a date for that.
What's, what type of a time commitment do we generally associate with that?
Two to three hours.
Okay.
Especially if we're gonna have a, you know, an opportunity to share the Christiansburg Strand feasibility.
So we're looking at September? Would it be best if we did a Google on that? I mean, a, uh.
Doodle poll.
Yeah.
If we could come up with something.
Doodle on that.
I tried to come up with something.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
How about September the 23rd? Can we do it?
September the 23rd?
A week before the joint meeting, can we do it?
What day is that?
That's a Tuesday.
How about the 9th? As a.
Or the 9th.
No, I can't, I won't, I can't do the 9th.
23rd is fine for me.
I, I would wonder if we could look at the month of October, we already have three meetings in September, I mean, I know we're gonna have a retreat in October, but, um, that's a lot to pack in in September, in my opinion.
Three meetings in one month?
It would be four with this additional one.
That's nothing.
Okay, I am not available on the 23rd.
Okay.
That's important.
So we go to October?
Uh, how about the 18th of September? I'd really like to do this before we meet with the supervisors.
I agree with that.
18 is fine with me.
Dan, do you think there's gonna be any difficulty with us getting closure on the Christiansburg Strand study by the 18th in time for us to do a presentation at the 18th meeting? Okay.
18 is fine with me.
Okay, we don't know about Mr. Jones, that's the one.
Mm-hmm.
Would you shoot him a email for tomorrow and ask him?
So you're talking September 18th?
And maybe the alternative is the 22nd?
Is that good with everybody, 18th, the first, first effort, 22nd, second effort? Everybody clear for that?
I can't do either one of those, but.
Either one of those?
No.
Well, then I think we need to look further.
Look at another date, right.
Let's go back to the 9th, is the 9th, it, it, it turns out the 9th is okay for me. Who said the 9th? What about the 9th?
It might be too early for the feasibility.
Dan?
What do you have in September?
Not, not much.
You don't have a 9th either, okay.
But maybe we won't be able to have everyone present at this meeting.
What, whatever we do at this meeting, we basically will be doing with the supervisors, right? So if someone's not at this meeting?
Not necessarily, because the first time you take a look at a feasibility, Christiansburg feasibility, uh, study, you know, our plan was not to bring you a rigid recommendation, our plan was to bring you information and menus of options. And in the past, before you actually, you know, presented it to the supervisors, or at least in the time I've been here, you all had prioritized what your position was on some things, so, you know, I don't know that you would necessarily wanna present the Christiansburg Strand to the supervisors. I think that that might be a, a discussion that you need to, to look at more than one time. I've already looked at the draft, and I can tell you that it's very complex.
It may go to the next time we meet with them.
Mm-hmm, so, you know, I might would say, why don't we just try to find a date that we can do our capital meeting and make it ours, and then look at, um, maybe the next second quarter with the supervisors? Because when I go and we go to talk to them, we need to have a comprehensive, strategic message that we wanna share, and I, I'm not sure that I can get a comprehensive, strategic message around the Christiansburg stand, Strand with one, with one full board discussion.
Okay, let's move to October. And did anyone come up with dates in October?
Given that we don't have Wendell here, can I suggest that we do the dates with the doodle poll, and we can all fill them out, including Wendell?
Since it's gonna be in October, I think that'd be a good, a wise decision.
Okay.
Okay, where am I? Is there any other unfinished business that we need to discuss? Are we set with that, we're gonna have a doodle poll on that?
That's fine.
Okay, fine. Is there any other unfinished business?
Um, I'd just like to make a comment too, we were talking about the kickoff meeting in the morning, I won't be able to be there, so I hope that you guys will extend my best wishes to everyone, but with us moving into the new building, we're shorthanded and it's crazy, and I just, we start at 8:30, and I'm sorry, but I can't be there.
I understand.
And I won't be there either, but I'll be there in spirit.
I'll be there as long as there's bacon.
I guess you won't be there.
New business.
You seen the price of bacon?
Yeah, really. Um, I have some new business, and I know it's late, so I'll make it quick, but I've waited years to bring this up, and I feel like now's the time to do it, and I've sent emails and called some, but, um, it's something I would like to throw out there for us as a board to consider, or I don't know how to say it other than "I want," but I would like to see our board, um, get single subscriber insurance benefits. We, um, you know, I've spoke with some board of supervisors members as well, they do get those, and, you know, their pay is much higher than ours, and they also not, all of them take advantage of having a phone, but I do believe they have that option as well. Now, mind you, with this being said, in no way do I mean that negative or ugly toward the board of supervisors, but our districts are the same, we have almost about the same meetings, and I know for myself, along with everybody else, we rarely miss any meetings. In nine years I've been on the board, we've not had a raise, or, you know, I know for myself, I've missed probably on one hand, you know, that many meetings in nine years. And although we are at a time now where our meetings are falling consistently, I remember And although we are in a time now where our meetings are falling consistently, I remember many years when we were having one and two meetings a week. And, you know, a couple of years ago, I wanted to bring it up, but we didn't have the funding. Teachers weren't getting raises, and I couldn't. So now, with those things in place and with our insurance changing, I would like for us to consider it, so I'm throwing that out there.
Can we put that on the agenda for discussion?
We can do that.
Okay. Done.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Just real quickly, this is just something I would like to acknowledge. I spoke with one of our recent graduates from Christiansburg High School, a couple of, who graduated a couple of years ago today, Alex Mosier. He's getting ready to be deployed to the George Washington over in the Gulf, and he was, he called me right before his plane left, excited, and I just wanted to acknowledge one of our students who is serving our country, and he was very, very excited for what he was about to accomplish and what he was doing, and I just want to publicly acknowledge him, a graduate of Christiansburg High School, for doing such a tremendous thing and job.
I believe that Ms. Blackburn's going to bring this to a future meeting, but just to publicly acknowledge that we're going to have on our agenda the discussion and information regarding start time of our schools and the advantages and disadvantages of changing the secondary or an elementary start times.
You've got that on your radar. Okay, announcements and information, and we will accept your, your congratulations to the young man?
Yes.
Under this announcements and information also.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, he's hoping...
What branch is he in?
Navy, he's a sailor.
Excellent.
And he's hoping to, in about four or five years, to become a chaplain, so...
Very good. Any other announcements, information? School, whole county opening Wednesday, August 6th at Christiansburg High School. Breakfast starts at 8:00?
7:30.
7:30?
Meeting at 8:00.
Meeting at 8:30. First day of school is August 12th. Preparation, agenda preparation. Are there any questions or additions to the agenda preparation? And I need a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.